I'm showing 5 o'clock, so I'm gonna call this meeting to order. And we have our department heads here. Let me, let me say just a few things before we get started. It would be my intention to treat this as casual as we have the last two. That we will open the floor, we'll try to be respective of each other's comments. And we will feverishly take notes. I have a whiteboard up here that Chief Bradley or I one can, can keep up with some of our thoughts if we need to. Let me say one thing that is gonna be my intention for 2014 is we are gonna change one way that we handle our accounting. So we will be able to see every three months really where we stand. In the past, we have allowed department heads to go ahead and expense their yearly's in the first month. And so it doesn't give us an accurate read of where we are in, say, June. We don't know exactly where we are. So we're gonna change that. That order's already been out, and all the department heads understand that. The reason I tell you that is because this budget is, is tight. And I wanna know, three months in and six months into 2014, exactly where we stand. If sales tax are up and we're holding our expenses in line, you know, then we'll know it. We won't be guessing in June. We'll know, have a pretty good idea. I know that we cut back on some of our expenses. We cut travel and education back. But it would be my intention, intention that come May or June, if we were out of that line item and we needed to continue to have training for, especially for public safety and for certifications, we've got the capability of coming back to the council and go, hey, look, we really need to throw another fifteen or twenty thousand dollars in travel. We need to put another fifteen or twenty in education, or whatever the line item might be. And so, I know that we've, we've said in the past that the budget is a guide. But this next year, it's, we're gonna have the capability of, of really knowing where we are every three months. So with that said, we will not go longer than seven o'clock tonight, no matter what. If we have to have another meeting after this, we will. We're gonna stay until seven if we need to. At six, we have an economic development announcement for Lady that will only take about five minutes. So with that, I will open up the floor and let me ask, we have two department heads that have prior commitments tonight that I understand they couldn't change those. And one is Sandra Taylor-Smith, history, and Chief Davis's staff Christmas parties tonight. So if anybody's got any questions for Sandra on history budget, we can ask her first. And if we've got any questions for Chief Davis, let's, let's talk to him first so that he can be excused to host his staff. So with that, anybody wants Sandra? She's here. Does anybody need Sandra? Go ahead. No, 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 no for Sandra? Sandra, you're excused. How about Chief Davis? Anybody need Chief Davis? Beth, Ms. White?
Yes, Mayor. I missed the last budget meeting, and I did get a chance to watch it on the video, and it was really interesting to watch everybody, I'll say that. Quite interesting. But y'all did a great job. What I came away with was one particular thing I'm kinda struggling with, and you may have addressed it in, earlier in this meeting, but not sufficiently, is the, the police and the fires, travel and education monies that are, that we have cut back in half. And I personally don't agree that that cut should take place. I know that cutting travel and, and education is important, and we've done it across the board, but I really struggle with our first responders being asked to cut anything in that area, professional training that might occur. So I'd like to revisit that, just generally.
Karen, what's, what's in PD and FIRE right now, travel and education?
In the police budget, the education is twenty thousand, and travel is twenty-two-five, for a total of forty-two-five. And in FIRE, each one of those has ten thousand two hundred and fifty, for a total of twenty thousand five hundred.
Okay, I, I think the question is, Chief, can you make it on forty-two-five if you really watch your Ps and Qs, or, or not?
Well, you know I'm gonna make it if that's all I have. You know, your comment you said earlier about coming back and revisiting, you know, that's fine with us. There's some things that we're gonna have to do, and we're gonna have to train. We've got a new training division now, new members in training that, they're gonna do some, attend some classes that will allow them to train the officers more than sending them out. Some of the things that, the places that we have to go are expensive, and, but, I mean, what I did is basically send out to all the captains what your plans are for next year, and their plans were right at fifty-nine thousand dollars. But, you know, they're guestimating on travel, and, you know, and a lot of times we get classes that are closer, that, that doesn't cost that. Part of what's happened with, with grant funding, it's going away. And so some of the training that we had been able to go to before, like in Mississippi, it's not available anymore because it, it was free of charge. They put, put you up, fed you and everything. All we had to do was gas to get there. That's gone away. So that's gonna be a little bit of an expense that we didn't have. But we can watch what we have and come back if necessary.
Ms. Robinson?
My comment is, and nothing against the police and FIRE, but we're all in this together. And a lot of departments are having to give up something. Now, we may not need to cut them as deep, but then we'll have to find the cut somewhere else. But I'm for the cut for police and FIRE, the amount that has been recommended. And simply because we're all in this together. It's, you know, everyone's gonna have to tighten their belt, and we just have to work together. And then later on down the road, if we need to find some money, or come up with money to add it back in, or to take care of a need, then that's what, you know, we should do. But otherwise, I'm for the cuts.
Ruth, Ms. Fauch?
I'll repeat this again. Public safety is our number-one issue that I hear every time I'm out in public, wandering around, talking to people. There is forty-five thousand dollars in the Arkansas Regional Innovation Hub that could be easily transferred over to cover this entire amount. And our officers will maintain the training and qualification standards that they need.
Well, if I might, you know, like I said before, we're watching closely what we do. And, you know, it's kind of, this is my first year, full year, to be chief. I won't be able to pin it off on Chief Bradley anymore. So I know that. And so we're really gonna pay attention to what we're doing and, and make sure we're, we're spending the money that we, the way we should. I agree, we all have to be a part of this, and, and I'm willing, I mean, we can, we're gonna make it. If we have, if there's something that we need, we're gonna come to you, and I think all y'all are gonna support it.
Questions, comments? Ms. Ross?
Could Chief Bradley put what we're short right now up on the board? Just so...
What we're what?
What we're short?
For not...
Well, I mean, with this. So we're totally balanced right now, but what we can addition, make, we could make additional cuts and take less out of reserve, though.
All right, the question would be...
What are we having to take out of reserve right now? That's what I wanna see. That's just where we are right now, where we're, where we're at. And what that leaves us in reserve, I think, is what I'm looking for.
The amount that's budgeted out of carry forward right now to balance the budget is one million, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and nine dollars.
And that's what we would have to take out of reserve currently, right?
One, one-five-eight, six-oh-nine.
And that would leave a balance of...
That's correct.
Ms. Ross?
Yes.
And what does that leave us in reserve?
Well, a lot depends on what happens in December, but we have about seven million in fund balance right now.
Plus the one million one we're transferring?
It's after.
Minus one million.
That would be subtracting.
We have seven after that.
So it'd be five-nine, five-eight, something like that. Six, six even.
But we have to remember, anything that we take out of reserves gotta be replaced if we wanna keep it.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
My original thought was that we could take more out of the reserve to, to accommodate this extra, to get the police and the fire back to their original amounts. I think Alderman-Fauch had a good suggestion, and with the Innovation Hub and my thoughts on that, we could possibly take twenty thousand out of that and reduce that amount down to twenty-five thousand. But it still leaves us with a shortfall, 'cause we need about sixty-three thousand to cover this. I'd further say that if these departments are given training money and they don't use it, and it's not, they're not, you know, that it's returned, and I, I would think that our departments would be honest in that regard if there's something they didn't need. I'd rather have our police and FIRE have this money available and know that they have it. They're our first, they're the forefront of this city. There's really, I mean, they lay their lives, their lives down on the line for us every day. All of them do. And I just, I feel like there's other things that we can't do for them, but this is one thing we can.
Other comments?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak against taking that money out of the Innovation Hub because, number one, we just got a, the Innovation Hub just got a grant from the Delta Regional Authority for two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. We got another large, large sum of money coming in, about two and a half a million dollars. So for, for the city of North Little Rock, where the facility's gonna be located, not to put their portion in would be an absolute disgrace.
I agree. I agree. They, you know, as soon as that Innovation Hub spends off one business, we're all gonna sit around, sit around and go, wow, that's a great idea. I mean, if the state's throwing money at it, and Delta Regional Authority, which is eight-state region, is, is already announced two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, then I agree, we certainly need to do our share. Ms. Robinson?
To Ms. Scott, you're saying that the budget currently is balanced, taking that?
Correct.
It's balanced. So technically, what you all have worked on and submitted, we really don't need to take from anywhere because, you know, anymore, because we're balanced.
Right, we're balanced with pulling one point, one-five-eight million out of our fund balance, which is our savings account.
So what I would like to see is that the recommendations remain as they are. And what we need to do is look, you know, long-term, and that is to come up with those impact fees, if it's no more than three or five dollars, is what we need to look at, you know, sanitation fees, you know, and put that in place. And then in the event that police and FIRE needs additional money, or any department needs additional money, we would have monies available, or funds available.
It, it will be, my intention in January, to set up a committee, staff, of staff, and we will gather all of the information that you could ever want, as far as revenue options. And then we'll either present it to you as a committee, or as a council as a whole, probably would be a council as a whole, and let us, you know, look at and make decisions on what we're gonna do in 2015. We need, we need to make some of those decisions probably by April.
So Mayor, if this is a balanced budget, and I've looked over this, and I don't have a problem with it, but if this is a balanced budget, and that is what we were needing, is a balanced budget, I suggest that we go ahead and we vote, you know, or accept the budget, and then if we need to come back later on in the year to review, make amendments, or additional allocations, we do just that. And the department heads in the meantime will let us know if we need to add, you know, make amendments to add to this. But I, I recommend we accept what has been offered to us.
Ms. Ross?
We still have some things that are unfunded. We have the, I know we still have that position, the unfunded code officer. We're bringing more, you know, we've got the Outdoor Storage Task Force that we're gonna be bringing some legislation on that, which is gonna be additional enforcement. We've got, we're, seems like every meeting we're adding something to it, and we're putting more, and they've got to have another officer. We have that position, it's unfunded. The youth program, one question that I had too on that, is thirty, we're down to thirty-five thousand on the youth program. I know twenty-four thousand comes out of that for THIA, and are we still, we're not taking that no more?
No, no. We put some thought into that, let me give you our, our thought. When you add up all the monies that, that we're putting towards youth, we're about a quarter of a million total. Because the, if I'm not mistaken, the THIA Foundation is twenty-four thousand, and it's in art and culture.
Oh, you moved it over to art and culture?
It's always been there.
Oh, okay.
And then we've got the Art Connection, which is eighty-five thousand, which is youth-related, so that's a hundred thousand. Then we've got the mayor's youth council, which is twenty thousand, whatever. Then we have the mayor's summer youth program, which is eighty thousand.
Now, what does that come out?
It's in salaries and admin.
Administration?
Yeah. So, you know, just quickly, there's, there's two-hundred thousand right there. So I, I didn't feel uncomfortable at all of cutting that youth program down to thirty from seventy-five, 'cause we're already spending two-hundred thousand plus on youth. So that thirty thousand in youth is really just, will be miscellaneous youth-related expenses throughout the year.
Additional. Okay, all right. And then Six Bridges, which is Suez Puente, so I know we've got twenty-five thousand in there, is that, that's considered youth too, correct?
Well...
I know, it's both.
It's both.
It's both.
It's both. It, you know, I mean, our Latino population is growing, and, and they, they need help, and, and they're running out of money quickly. So we need to help them, that's the reason we put that in there.
It's a great program, too. One other thing that we just discussed before, and I know that this is balanced, but anything that we can adjust, or make any tweaks to, to make sure that we've, you know, the biggest bang for our buck. Under communications, I see that app for twelve thousand dollars is still in there.
Right.
I still feel like we're gonna have enough money from the website, that we've got the money set aside for the website. We should have enough money for the app, too, on that.
We, we cut the website back to what it actually is.
Oh, you did?
Yeah. Yeah, it was, we had fifty thousand in the original, and we cut it back to twenty-three or, or twenty-five.
Well, maybe more than that, though. Okay, you may have cut it too much, I didn't catch that one.
Well, that twelve thousand dollars on that communication app, is that absolutely necessary right now?
Well, I think that we are in that day and time that social media is where it's at. And, you know, we looked at doing a report and repair hotline, we thought we could do it by phone and all that, and it just didn't work. This app is working throughout the country in aggressive communities, and it's very inexpensive with what we're getting. You know, I think at the next council meeting, Nathan is going to make a presentation and tell us about the app, and also about our new website. So if I started trying to tell you about the app and all the things that it does, but not only is it giving you an opportunity to report any and everything, it also creates work orders and everything else, so that, that management can keep up with the reports in, and how reports are handled. And it's just a great tool for, you know, a thousand dollars a month. Actually, I think it might be a little bit less than that, but a thousand a month. So I really wouldn't want that to go away if, you know, if next year, you know, if I only be a one-year deal, if, if next year doesn't start looking a little bit better, so.
Well, Mayor, what, what, what I'd like to, you know, say and recommend to, to my peers here on the council is that the budget group or committee has submitted a balanced budget. And we as council members can always relook at the budget. And, and I'm sure if finances get, for, there need to be some cuts later on, and I'm sure that the mayor, you know, or department heads, or someone will get with us and mention it to us. My thing is, I think they've worked hard in putting together this budget. I commend them for this budget. And y'all, I just think that we should go ahead and accept this for now, and if we need to come back later and make changes, do it at that time.
Okay, anybody else?
Well, I, I'm sorry, I, I mean, I missed this. I was working off the sheet of changes, I didn't realize that, that there had, didn't changes made to the sales tax capital improvement, 'cause I wasn't going back and forth to that. So I was just looking over this. What's this building at Nineteenth and Pike that we're having remodeled for the thirty thousand?
That, well, it's, you know, for, you and I've been around here so long, it's the old Dr. Jolly and Dean's office that we ended up with when we bought the right-of-way through there, and then it became personnel. It was HR for a while, and then I think code was there for a while, and then we turned it into Barron Cross Neighborhood Group Meeting Place, and then Police Department ended up with it as storage. It's a nice building, and it's in a great location, right in, you know, right there by Barron Cross, which we're concentrating on some. The Argentum Community Development Corporation, okay? Which helped rejuvenate downtown and, and the Argentum neighborhood is, at this point in time, having some cash flow problems. They're asset-rich and cash-poor, and will be for a couple more years, until those loans on the apartments at, on Seventh Street, and then thirty-eight individual homes throughout Argentum are paid off, and then they will be, their cash flow will be great. So we, we don't want Argentum Community Development Agency to go away. So I thought that that would be a great place for them to office and save themselves a couple thousand dollars a month in rent. They would be close to a lot of their NSP-2 homes that they're working on. We would fix the roof and the heat and air, and then in two years, they could start either paying us rent, or we would have a, a, a good building to continue forward with. So that was why we went ahead and put that in there.
Can we go over these changes to the sales tax capital? I, I just, I didn't see these.
Sure we can.
That was an exhibit A, and I had exhibit B, so my, that's my bad.
We got plenty of time.
Just for everyone's reference, it was part of the attachment with the legislation that was filed.
Okay. I know, and I was just looking at the sheet, the change sheet. I thought, I didn't realize that there were changes in the capital improvement, that was my...
I don't think we changed a whole lot.
There were some additions on here, though.
Yeah, just the last, no, it was one hundred and...
What's the Christmas tree and decorations for twenty-five thousand?
Exactly what it is. The, if you wanna feel sorry for somebody, go, go over there and look at our... The, if you want to feel sorry for somebody, go over there and look at our Christmas tree that's sitting out in front on Main Street. It's probably 10 years old and quickly falling apart, and so is a lot of our Christmas decorations that we hang on the streets. They're all old, and we really just have to work at it one year at a time. And so that's why I put that in there for Christmas trees and to refurbish and purchase new, some of our angels and things like that that we hang up and down Pike and Camp and JFK and Broadway, et cetera. HVAC speaks for itself, City Services. Sanitation, I think we showed y'all photographs of the deplorable conditions in the dressing and bathroom areas in our sanitation department. And we've done a lot of that in-house already, we just need a little bump there to get over the edge on that. And then 11, $13,000 worth of computers.
I have just a couple more things then. So the app is under, okay. One of the things, too, that I think that bothers me, and I know with AIM, the $175,000, I understand the economic impact, I understand that it brings, you know, dollars in, but the $175,000, and we're cutting the fire and pla, they've had no cuts, they've only had additions through the years, and we're cutting the fire and police that need their training by $63,000, the two of them put together, and we've left the AIM at the 175. I would suggest taking 50,000 out of that to go towards the police and fires training and travel, education and travel.
I would be against that. I have talked to their board, which for the first time, we have a really active fundraising board. And if there ever was a year that we didn't need to cut them, it's this year, because I think there's a real, really good chance that the HOGA is going to be here in the next few months. Now, they have agreed verbally that, starting in 2015, that they would start whittling back on the city's portion of the museum at $25,000 a year. So, for the next five years. So that would cut back 125,000 off of that by 2000 and whatever.
We keep trying to find money from someplace else to cover this shortfall that Alderman White, I forget your name, that Alderman White was making reference to on the police and fire, whether it comes to, what, $60,000?
63.
You know, we got a lot of work to do on our budget in the next year. In my mind, if you're going to do it, just take another $60,000 out of reserves and let's roll on and get, and just get this thing done. Because, you know, if we're going to do that, then I want to, I want to fight for this $40,000 that we're taking out of the youth budget, you know? But, you know, I'll eat that, or let's, or you know what, so let's don't, let's don't take 40,000 out of the youth budget, let's take 40 out of 50 Live and put it back in youth, you know? So then now 50 Live is suffering, take another $60,000 out of the reserves, fund police and fire for their travel and their education, and let's rock on.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Well, while we're rocking on, let's go ahead and fund the unfunded code officer's position, too.
Well, I mean, I really want to talk about that, you know, we've talked with Tom Wadley, and I really want to wait a few more months. And the reason that I want to do that is I believe that we need another code officer. I just want them directed in a different direction. I think we need a code officer that is assigned to sanitation. But I hadn't made my mind up yet. I think we need to really see how well our community takes on to our new rules. And I think we need, because Tom's spending a lot of time on sanitation complaints, anyway. So if we can, if we get a new officer, I'm leaning towards, right now, assigning a new officer to sanitation. I really think, you know, I've been in negotiations with police unions and fire union, and probably after the first quarter of this year, probably going to come back with some proposals for them that will be some increased spending. And once we put that package together, you know, I can include the code officer at that point in time, and by that time, Tom and Harold and Danny and I can decide where that code officer is going to be best used.
Maurice, you go.
I just have a slight suggestion, but, and nobody likes it, when we implement this sanitation fee, we'll have money to swim in to fund the code officer for sanitation, so...
No, we'll have money to keep our...
And let me do the one for code enforcement. I'm ready for the sanitation fee, but that's just me.
Okay. Well, y'all, I mean, I want everybody to think about that. You don't raise a whole lot of money with sanitation fee, number one. Number two is, we pay 100%. Our citizens pay 100% of that fee. And, you know, the other option, of course, would be a sales tax where we only pay 60% and people that live somewhere else pay 40. So think about that, you know, before we make those decisions. Mr. Baxter?
You know, the thing that I keep coming back to is, you know, last year we took almost $800,000, brought it out of the reserve fund for 13. If you look at what we're trying to do here for 14, that's a 400 roughly $1,000 increase from what we pulled out for 13. That gets us to that 10% magic number, not that it's ma, you know, 10% of our reserve fee of what our budget is that we want to hold in there. If we're 400,000 short, quote-unquote, this year, I just wonder what we're going to look at next year. I know that we've bandied about a sanitation fee, and I think somebody the other night said maybe 250, $300,000 a year. You know, that's not going to equal, is that number not right?
We have 22,000 customers, so multiply 22,000 times whatever fee you wanted to put on there, and that's how much you're going to get.
Well, again, you know, the cost of doing business is going to continue to go up. And, you know, I just hate to go in that deep because if I look at our unfunded requests, you know, we've got almost $8 million worth of unfunded requests. You're talking about vehicles and things of that nature, hard goods that are, again, are not going to go down in price. They're going to continue to go up, our stuff is going to continue to get older, break down, and increase our maintenance costs that much further. So that right there scares me.
Me, too.
I think that...
Yes, ma'am.
That's one of the, that's why I asked Ms. Scott to give us all our outstanding debts, bonds, short-term financing, so that we can see where we are. We've got a lot of payments coming up, we've got a lot of balloon payments coming up. And I just wanted to make sure that we understand that we've got a lot coming up, so if we're going to be increasing anything, we're going to, I don't know where we're going to get the money, because I certainly don't want to borrow anymore.
I don't either. And that's, you know, one reason that we, you know, work the electric department budget the way that we have, because I don't want to borrow the money for the hydro plant. And so we're going to try to pay cash for it instead of borrowing it. Let's jump around just a little bit, if we may. I know we've been focusing on the general fund, but, you know, when we approve the budget at the next council meeting, it's also going to include the electric department budget. So if you had time to look over that, are there any questions? Jason's here to ask those questions, and if there's anything that we need to discuss on the electric department budget, then we'll come back to the general fund here. Any comments? Ms. Ross?
I just want to thank Mr. Carter for keeping that ice storm away.
We held a prayer vigil.
That's why I'm getting, I'm sure that you did, that's why I'm thanking you and it worked.
It did, it did. To an extent, we felt like, I've told folks, we got all dressed up and our date didn't show up, but it wasn't a good date, anyway.
Yeah.
So we were okay with that.
All right, any questions? Yes, Bruce?
We had hundreds of thousands of dollars in uncollectible electric bills.
We do.
And...
It's gotten better, though.
The smart meters that you're requesting was 800,000 or something?
It's a lot of money. Smart Meter Project is, yeah, it's a very expensive project.
My request is on those that any customer who has been disconnected, because that survey you were doing, I was kind of happy that you were asking that, is any customer who is disconnected and comes back in to get reconnected has to have a smart meter put in that location, if at all. I mean, there's some locations you can't do it, but...
We're doing that right now. Anyone who is disconnected is put back on with a remote disconnect meter.
Correct. And with a prepaid balance, just like a prepaid debit card, where if you have $250 worth electricity, when you hit your $250 worth of electricity, your account is closed and they'll come back in and reload their meter at a later date. We can't afford to keep carrying hundreds of thousands of dollars, and I'm sorry if these folks can't pay their electric bill on time, but we can't afford $6, $800,000 a year in uncollectible money, either.
We're not equipped to do prepaid yet.
Right.
But that's certainly an option that we look forward to being able to offer to our customers and maybe even, you know, what we've thought about for some of our residential rental properties, to put everybody on prepaid. That's something that, that's a discussion for city council that we'll talk about, you know, when we get to the point that we've got that capability. It's pretty cool. I've looked at it where they're running it in Florida, the folks who are on it, I think, love it because it's no deposit, it's, you know, there's no kind of credit check, there's no, you know, blood of your firstborn child to try to set up an account in the first place. It is painless. You can set up electric service online, you decide how much you want to put on the meter, you can, if you forget to pay your bill and the lights go off, it's not somebody showing up and then, you know, you've got an increased deposit, and then you've got a disconnect and reconnect fees. It's just pull out your smartphone, hit the button, or go down to the library and get on the computer, load some more money on the account, and the lights just come back on.
And we're going to be 100% residential by this time next year.
Yes, sir.
And let me just say one thing about our bad debts. It's maybe at an all-time low. David Melton has done a wonderful job, $300 and something thousand, and I, if I'm not mistaken, I think it's reached as much as a million over the past 20 years. So that's, you know, if you look at it, that's well less than 1%. So I think the industry norm is even, is around 1%. So we're less than industry norm.
David's doing a great job. He's sitting back here behind me, and I'm not just saying that because he's got tactical advantage on me right now. He really is doing a great job to help reduce our uncollected expense. And, you know, but anything that we can do to help improve the process, we're certainly interested in exploring. One of the things our finance director was whispering to me was a conversation I'd had with her earlier. We would like to have our budget approved with a separate resolution, because like I want to discuss, have a separate section in for outage restoration. You know, right now, we've kind of got a process that if all the lights go out and we've got to get the lights back on, I mean, we're just spending money and getting the lights back on. I want to make sure that there's an authorization that's got oversight, that we're properly accounting for that and properly reporting that to city council. So I'll be asking for authority that gives us, you know, that when we have a massive outage, city council said, yes, spend the money, get the lights back on within these defined limits and report immediately thereafter, because that's all kind of ambiguous right now. We're reacting where we think that you would want us to, but I don't think there's the clear lines of...
Now, let me make one statement on that. These major storms are very, very, very expensive. I know that you saw on the TV that Entergy had brought in 3,500 crew from other places and from other people. Those 3,500 crews, there's five men to a crew, so how many crews that is, 800? They cost $7,000 a day. And the other utilities can recoup that. You know, they'll go to PSC and say, hey, we spent $30 million on this storm. PSC allows them to raise their rates to collect that $30 million. City of North Little Rock, if it cost us $1 million, we don't get any of it back.
Unless FEMA.
Right, unless it's a FEMA reimbursement.
So it's, you know, we had two crews here for one day, and it was clicking at $14,000, and we debated it, and we made the decision that it would be well worth the money if that storm had hit us like we'd anticipated. So it's expensive to fight these storms. Ms. Ross?
I have a couple of things. One thing, when talking about our bad debts, and something that North Little Rock, that we seriously, as a council, need to look at, too, is our deposit's $100 for new service. And that was great back in the day when your highest electric bill was probably $100, $150. We've got, what, three times probably what it was at the time when it was a $100 deposit. So that deposit's something that we need to look at, and look what the other, you know, utilities around us are charging, too.
And that's true. It's, it can be particularly, you know, you're trying to weigh, how burdensome are you on someone who's trying to sign up for service? How can we protect ourselves against bad debts, trying to make a good business decision that works well for our community? That's really where we've tried to explore, as Alderman Fauch was alluding to earlier, having, trying to have a prepaid option or something like that, where it's easier for people to sign up, it doesn't cost them as much money upfront, but it still protects us against our losses. And so we're going down that road. If we, we want to look at our rates, you know, soon, as soon as city council wants us to move in that direction, and we want that to be a part of it, is how we run our business operations, because business losses are real. Anytime we lose money, that's more money everybody else has to pay, you know? So we need to cut back on that as best we can.
I have one more question. On the Sherwood franchise fees and tariffs, it still is a single item, line item there?
We're going to break that out.
Okay.
And I told you we do that.
Definitely.
Because that's, when you see...
We're doing it different now.
Well, and it was in two line items. We put it together because that's my fault, okay? I just had this gag reflex at this...
Too many numbers.
2,000 line items, I was looking at it, and I said, we got to put some of these things together. So Joe Follin's here with me, he can tell you that, you know, I do that a lot.
I just definitely want, I want to see where we are.
But we'll break those out. One reflects the, about 600,000 of that is a pass-through franchise that's paid by their customers who live in Sherwood, and the remainder of that is that tariff rider that was brokered a few years back and is part of our new franchise agreement.
So you'll break that out before we vote on it?
Absolutely, I will.
Good.
Okay. Any other, Mr. Fauch?
And I'm not sure this is under the electric department, but you put 2.3 million a year into the utility accounting department.
We do.
Is that a city department, or is that an electric department, and is that like a franchise free, a franchise fee that we're paying into UAD in behalf of the electric department, or...
That's money that we pay to the City of North Little Rock for providing us UAD services. So the electric department pays the City of North Little Rock's general fund for UAD to provide us utilities, accounting services.
And now, that is a separate entity outside of the general fund, is that correct, UAD? It's not incorporated?
No, it is.
It is. I thought UAD was within the general fund.
No, that's, that's, as far as I could tell, that doesn't fall under the general fund, so that's its own little fiefdom, separate from, well, there's a way to explain it, but...
And why it was set up that way years ago, who knows? But all the customer service clerks, everybody takes the phone calls, you know, does all the collections, does, counts all the money every day.
Right.
Tellers, you know? So that's how much it costs to gather and collect the money and handle the customer service.
We don't manage them, they don't work at our place, they work in the city services building.
They work... They work under Karen. Okay. Other comments and questions? Well, about the only thing that I've heard so far that was, Ms. White was saying that she wanted to raise police and fire, travel and education back up. I'm looking around to see if everybody wants to do that or if we want to leave the budget as is and adjust at three months or six months. What do we feel? How do y'all feel?
I definitely don't want to take any more out of reserve. I mean, we're way above my comfort zone on this already, so...
I'm kind of leaning that way. I assure you, I assure you that our police and fire department will not be short on training. And if they need to travel to train, we will cut something, you know, whether it's people or whatever. They're not going to go underfunded in that regard. Yes, ma'am?
Alderman Witcher is senior council member and have not heard from Mr. Witcher tonight, so I just want to hear from Mr. Witcher. What are your thoughts?
Well, my head's blank and bare.
Trying to put you on the spot.
Having gone through this for the last 23 years and lived with these budgets and then watched, watched things evolve, you know, to me, the budget is a living document. And it ebbs and flows with our cash receipts and with how well everything's doing. You know, one of the things that might occur is, you know, our tax money may increase if the economy changes, either good or bad. One of the things that could occur might be our generation that we, you know, I think that it probably will increase, you know, based on our history over the last 23 years with our, what I officially call the rock crusher. There are, probably in June or July, we'll have, in my opinion, a really good picture of where we are. And so, you know, I don't get excited at this point. What I do know is, you know, we're going to have to face up and we need to, and Ms. Ross and I have kind of had this conversation about what to do on a long-term basis. You know, we're going to have to involve the public with our situation and say, you know, do you like the services you're getting now? You know, what is it worth to you? Is there something that we're doing that we, you don't think we should be doing? And then, we're going to have to sit down internally and value those services and what the public is getting for those services, you know, just like you would in a business. But you don't do those things in one or two, three months, you know, when you're looking at a budget. So, as the mayor indicated, you know, there are a lot of decisions that we need to look at and make by the end of the year. You know, the bottom line is, you know, we cannot continue to go into our reserves. You know, I guess when Martin Gibson was still sitting across over there, he and I pushed back and forth on Mayor Hayes regarding the money we were taking out of the electric department. We have been fortunate. It has allowed us to do a lot of things most cities our size cannot do. But the circumstances with the electric department are also changing. You know, and my opinion is, instead of taking, this is $10 million, as I recall, from the electric department for a $60 million budget, we should be maybe pulling five or six billion bucks out of there. So, you know, there are just a lot of things that we need to talk about internally.
The information that we're going to be presenting to you after the first of the year, you know, I believe it was Todd Larson who saw somewhere and he emailed me and he said, you know, Conway is smaller than we are and their sales tax revenue is $8 million or whatever, bigger than ours, you know? Or is their retail business doing that much better than us? Well, when we got to looking, Conway's got a 1.75% sales tax. We looked at Hot Springs and Hot Springs has got a 1.5% sales tax. And so, what we, the information that we're going to be giving you, we'll give you 20 cities and what their sales tax are, what their sanitation fees are. I mean, we're going to give you so much information that you won't have any questions as far as what do we need to do and how do we need to address it. You know, when I met with the fire union the other day for the second time, they're, we haven't done anything adjustment-wise with fire department since 2008, which is, you know, what, six years? In their contract right now, it says that we will pay 75% of their family insurance plan. And I told them, and of course, I'll tell PD the same thing because I think their contract says the same thing. They're both out, they're not in force right now, I don't think. But I said, I can't comfortably sign a long-term contract guaranteeing you 75% of your major medical for your family because I don't know what kind of financial situation we're going to be in. But I also told them that we were going to give them, we as in city council, would give them and their families plenty of notice before we would make some major changes like that. We don't know what the insurance is going to be next year. You know, I mean, it's crazy enough as it is. But that's a huge benefit and I don't want to take that away. But I also don't want to sign in blood, and I don't think y'all do either, that 70% of our personnel cost, we're guaranteeing 75% and, you know, for a long period of time. So, all those things, we've got to be thinking about, you know? We've got to be thinking about, you know, what our insurance costs are and what our, you know, I mean, the list goes on and on. So, it's going to be a brutal 2014 as far as planning goes, and we're going to have to do it soon. We can't wait until November to make these decisions. We're going to have to make them in April. That's my goal, is to have something presented to you by end of February and for us to have a joint plan. You know, if all of us aren't on it, in it together, then it's not going to probably work. So, we're going to all have to hold hands. Ms. White?
The comments I've just heard today really, even though I don't agree maybe with some of the details, it's very impressive that this council is, cares so deeply about the city. And we don't agree on every little detail, but we do agree that we need to do better. And I believe we are going to do better next year. Some of the little, small things I think about is, for instance, our own, the administration travel that has been cut back. For instance, already in the new year, there's a conference coming up that I know I've registered for and the one in Fayetteville and others have as well. And I'm kind of, what I'm kind of wondering is, we need to get definition to those kinds of things at the administration level too, which will be a guide for the other departments, I'm sure. I don't know a lottery system or how we're going to work together to make that work, that we spend that $17,000. I think it's 17.5 is the...
Okay, which...
What I'm trying to say is, if we don't have, we've got to have a plan for that and those kinds of things.
Let me tell you what my plan is for that. Is that all travel in the admin budget will be approved by me. And, you know, am I going to say yes or no? You know, if the money's not there, yeah, I will. What my job, I think, is going to be with our travel budget is to organize it. And if we're going to go to a trip out of state, then, you know, I'll make sure that we're represented, but maybe not four of us can go. Only two can go. And then, those two need to come back. And when you come back, we'll have a meeting 30 minutes prior to a council meeting or something, and we'll get a briefing from the ones that went and say, this is the cool things we saw, this is some great ideas, and get briefed on it. The in-state travel to the Arkansas Municipal League, I think, is fine for us to do and go to. But I'll watch that budget and I'll keep us in line with what we're doing. Same thing on contingency fund. We're, I'm going to have to watch it and we'll rotate, we'll have to, you know, rotate. You know, sometimes not all of us will be able to go to represent the city. Maybe only half of us can go. So, I'm going to watch those two things. And, you know, our department heads are all on board of watching every penny that we So, I can assure you of that.
Well, I guess my only issue with that is that some of us serve on national committees and national councils. And when they have those meetings, that's, when the meetings are scheduled, it's usually scheduled around a conference or some other, some other event that's going on. So, it's, you know, if you don't, if you don't attend those meetings, then, you know, you'll eventually lose your position on those councils and committees and do a lot of good.
I will try my best to manage that and we'll have to adjust it, just like we did PD. You know, if it gets, if we're here in June and the admin budget is expired, then we'll come back in and go, hey, you know, we've got two people that are traveling to Washington in November. We need to put another $3,000 in there, just like we would, you know, for PD's budget. So, I mean, I'm honored that some of our council members are highly respected nationally and don't want that to end. So, I'm glad, if you're one of those, I'm certainly glad and we're all proud of you. I think Debbie is too, and I know Mr. Witcher is.
He's a big dog.
So, we want you to keep showing off North Little Rock. You know, you think about it, when you're meeting someone or these, even these vendors, we're putting North Little Rock's finest in front of them. And so, I think it's well worth the money. I am not going to travel out of state next year, so that'll be a little extra money that we can have for representatives to go to some of these other functions. Ms. Ross?
I just want to say one thing too, on this travel that's cut. If there's any department, not just administration and police and fire, if there's any department that has certification that they need to travel for, to make sure that they come back and tell us that. Because I don't want anybody in the city not receiving certifications that they need.
And we left those alone a little bit. You know, planning has some certification, legal has some certification. So, those that had certifications, we didn't cut them as much as we did everybody else.
I mean, animal shelter, I mean, I know that they, you know, every department, there's some kind of training or education that they need, I'm sure. So, I just want to make sure that everybody understands that they can't come back.
And we'll watch it. You know, I mean, PD is hard to peg. I'd be willing to bet that, you know, we could make PD budget work for training. Where travel gets involved is, that we don't have any control over, is if we start having to send detectives out of state, you know, for further investigation. If we have a murder or, you know, and they have to go to Dallas or to Chicago or whatever else, we might not have any and we might have $20,000 worth. I hope none, you know? Then we know that our crime is down, so...
I have one more question on the budget. As far as on the homeless, the additional 25,000 that Little Rock has requested, are we at the mercy of Little Rock from now on, anytime they want any additional money? If they come back and say, next year, we need an additional $50,000? Are we, you know, you know, it's 25 this year. Where, what's the line and where's the judgment calling that?
I don't know.
There's no help.
I think that at some point in time, you know, we're going to have to address that and that, you know, that interlocal agreement that we have, I believe that's split by a third, and a third, and a third, didn't it, Karen? Maybe Little Rock pays a third and we pay a third and, you know? You know, the less fortunate, sometimes, you know, we have to help them.
Oh, I agree, but I'm just, who's calling the shots on the money?
In this letter from Mayor Stotler, he says that the total expense is 375. Little Rock has budgeted 250 and he's requesting 125 from North Little Rock.
So, they're paying two-thirds and we're paying a third. Okay. We'll work on that this year before next year's budget. We'll have an agreement. We certainly are pleased that they're paying two-thirds and that the building is there. Any other comments? What I'm going to do right this second is I am going to recess. I'm not going to adjourn. I'm going to recess and we've got some very special guests. And Todd, I'm going to come down to the podium and I want to remind our guests that we are live on television, so don't tell any cranky jokes or anything. So, we are really excited about the Edwards family coming to North Little Rock. And, you know, it's a multi-million dollar day for Levy and for Amboy. And we certainly want to welcome Mr. Edwards to North Little Rock and your company's investment. I know that we've got some of the community leaders from Levy and Amboy and even Park Hill that this new store is going to serve. The Cash Savers is going to bring a $1.6 million payroll, $150,000 in sales tax. They're going to be a valued electric customer of ours. So, this is a win-win-win for North Little Rock and for that part of our community. So, I'm going to walk down to the podium and Todd and Terry and the Edwards family, if y'all come up, we'll visit just a little bit.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. One thing I wanted to add with the, to the mayor's list is, this is just not a grocery store. This is a new marketing, retail marketing concept that North Little Rock will be the first store in Arkansas that Edwards family will use this marketing concept. And Steve will talk a little bit more about that.
Thank you, Todd. We're really excited about coming into North Little Rock. Our family opened the first grocery store in Little Rock four years ago. We'd always been scared of the big city, but it's worked out really well. Each one of these stores that we have in Little Rock, it's like their own community. It's similar to what we're going to be up here. And it's been a great deal for us. We looked at the North Little Rock market, had surveys done on four different locations and a couple of different types of formats. And the thing that came back the best is it is... And the thing that came back the best is a deal that's called Cash Saver. And we're going to have the same thing that we have in our other Edwards Food Giant stores in Little Rock, except we're going to be, it's, we're not going to have a bakery deli. We are going to do barbecue, smoked chickens, those kind of things. But a huge expense in opening a grocery store is all the equipment and stuff it takes to do a bakery deli. And then the maintenance of that with employees and just the cost to operate that. And we're not doing the high-end decor. It's going to be a pretty plain thing. But you're going to have the same offerings as far as private label merchandise and name brand merchandise. And it's, we watched the concept. Our wholesaler, Associated Wholesale Grocery, started this about three or four years ago. And, you know, we talked and said it's a fluke deal. And it's, we started watching it and for three years now, just more and more people are doing it across the country through our wholesaler. And it's, the ones that have done it are doing more stores that way. But it's basically a cost plus 10%. The prices on the shelf, when you check out, you'll have 10% added and then sales tax. And that's the parts you like. But it'll be about $150,000 a year each to the county and the city in sales tax, plus the part that comes from the state. And I really can't tell you what that is because we don't know what our mix is going to be. And the state's pretty much eliminated the food and sales tax. We don't know what the food and non-food mix is going to be. But the things you're really going to see that, when you do like Little Debbie's and Frito-Lay and things that are pre-priced, and you see the much lower price that we're selling them for, and you add the 10%, it's still a lot less. And a lot of people are having hard times these days. And if you can go in and save 10% or so on your grocery bill and still have all the offerings, and we're going to have all the certified Angus beef, cut by meat cutters in the store, some of the prepackaged stuff, Swift Premium Pork, all-natural pork, Sanderson Farms all-natural chicken. It's going to be a full-line grocery store. It's just not going to be anything fancy. And that's where the cost savings that come in, not having to spend that money on the front end to do all those things. And we think it's something you're really going to be happy about. The old Walmart building, we're taking 50,000 out of the 70,000. That building is owned by Doyle Rogers Company, managed by Tommy Lassiter, he's a partner in that. And he's got people that have contacted him already about taking the other space. And there's some other buildings across there that they own, and he's excited about that. We're going in and if you can go out there now, you think a bomb dropped in it. But it's, you know, we're doing all-new parking lot lighting, new parking lot resurfacing. Safety is a huge deal these days. And, you know, stuff's grown up around there and we're having help with, from the economic development. But they're helping us with our landscaping and things to really improve the place and cutting down overgrown trees and opening it up where you can, you know, it's going to be a viable place again. And it's...
It's all that to you?
Jobs, okay. Probably 50 full-time, 70 part-time jobs. You know, it depends on our sales and that's what we're projecting, what the sales we're planning on doing and the thing. We're just really looking forward. We've had so many positive comments of people that have seen action going on around there and people are really excited about it. Just another choice to get a full-line grocery store at a lesser price. This is Gary Profit, who's Vice President of Operations. And Gary lives in Cabot, has an office here in Little Rock at our store in Cantrell, Mississippi, and Paul Routen. And these guys are, wants to keep everything together.
We certainly want to say thank you very much. This is our Chamber of Commerce and our Economic Development Corporation at its finest, because I know that they have worked with you and your staff to make this happen. Paula and Bill, stand up if you would. These are the two leaders of two of the neighborhoods that you're going to be servicing. And y'all be sure and meet and visit, because these people touch a lot of your potential customers and they're great leaders in their community and we certainly do appreciate them. But what I'd really like to do is get over here and y'all come up, let's get a picture. Steve, that's okay? We want to put it on Facebook and let everybody know that the Edwards family's grocery is coming to Levy and we're excited about it. So Todd?
And Amboy.
Yeah, Levy and Amboy and Park Hill.
When we read this, a couple of years ago, that got put into Ward 1.
That's Ward 1 now.
Thank you all.
All right. Absolutely.
Whatever you need, call us, we'll help you.
Thank you, Terry. Appreciate it. Well, that was special and we haven't done that much here. And I thought that was a good way to do the six o'clock hour. Okay, I mean, let's talk some more if you want to, but I'm ready to go forward if y'all are. Ms. Ross?
There was one more thing. I don't know if we can squeeze this out of the parks budget, but, you know, with the burn in the parks...
We can. It's going to be squeezed out.
Another $3,000?
Yes.
Okay.
That's a controlled burn, it's going to cost $3,000 and we will have enough in our budget to cover that. Okay, any other comments? All right, well, Ms. Ross?
I want to say something. I know that we don't all agree on this and we're never going to all agree on this, because there's several things that I would cut additional and move around. And I know there's things that Beth would cut and move around. I went Alderman White and, I mean, on and on and on. We all have different things, but I know it's a compromise and it's hard to not, compromise means not everybody gets everything they want, so.
Well, I assure you that I think this is a fair budget. But if we don't come up with some really great ideas, 2015, we're going to see a whole lot of cuts. And we need to make sure that everyone knows that. You know, that cuts are going to be deep in 2015 if things don't change.
Now, I know that you said that you were going to have meetings with staff and everything. I still want to see a budget committee with council members on the budget committee, similar to what other cities do. I don't know if you have four Aldermen and the finance director and then staff or what else, but I really, in most cities, they report monthly. I mean, you will, you know, when I read other cities, city council, you know, Malmell, they have a monthly report, you know, with their sales tax. Are we doing good? Are we down, we're up? Just to let everyone know where you are at that time, so.
I'm wrestling with that. I thought we wanted to do that, but I don't, I certainly don't mind giving you any information. I mean, I think you already get it, don't you? Do you not get the end of month numbers?
I get the budget report, the full budget.
Yeah, do you send that to everybody every month?
I've been sending that to Diane and I thought she was putting that out, that summary spreadsheet.
Okay.
But I...
Let's talk about that right after the first year. I know Alderman Witcher and I visited about it briefly and he had some concerns about it, but I don't know that I really care. I'm not going to stand up on my chair and fight one way or another. So if y'all think that's the direction you want to go, he's got his opinions. I don't know that we need to cover it tonight, but we'll make that decision in January. You know, if we're going to set one up and how we set it up.
Well, I'm in for support of it. I think there's some really hard decisions to be made. We got to make them and we got to put together the group of people that can move the information forward, so whatever it takes. And even if we have to hire in some help to help us get it done, I mean, it's got to be done.
Okay, we'll talk about it.
You can make me talk one more time. Okay, we have available to us on a monthly basis, a compilation of how our budget is doing, you know, how much we've spent and what's going on with that budget. Yeah, I would encourage each of you to try to get ahold of that and send and follow it for a couple of months to kind of get the flavor of what goes on. And, you know, simply because, you know, 100% of the money budgeted in a particular account and it's 90% out in June or July, you know, it's because of the way the bills have to be paid. So, you know, there's some little intricacies that you need to become familiar with.
That's going to change, though, Murray.
It's going to change somewhat, because we're only going to expense three months at a time.
Okay. Yeah, and you and I've had that discussion. You know, again, it's our responsibility to take care of the money. And I, you know, I think that we're going to have to send and look at our entire budget and decide what we get for the best bun, best value for our dollar. And, you know, and we might be doing some things now that we're not getting a good return on. I mean, you know, you have to look at it, just like you do a business. You know, what's the bottom line? What's the return? What's the benefits that we're getting? And again, you know, you don't do that in a matter of a month or two. And we all have our ideas about that, so.
Mr. Fauci, have you anything?
Yeah, I'm, you know, we keep saying next year, we're going to make the hard decisions. 1.158609, 1.1 million dollars out of the reserves. We can't even decide to cut 20, 40, 50,000 dollars out of a line item now. And we're dipping in 1.1 million dollars in reserves. I don't see how any of y'all can say that we're going to make the hard decisions next year when you can't even make some of the simpler, hard decisions this year. So it's just frustrating to me.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes, Mayor?
I'd like to get y'all's feedback. Previously, the budget exhibits included color graphs. Is it okay if we just email those out to you all rather than print them all out? This is pretty costly to print, this amount of color.
You look at last year's graph and it's probably the same as this year's.
They're very similar. So is that okay if I just email these?
Absolutely.
Okay, it's my intention to call this for a vote on the 23rd. We will have a separate resolution to approve the electric department budget on the 23rd. And we will have no more meetings on the budget between now and then. So seeing nothing else, I'm going to adjourn. Thank you all very much. The department heads, thank you very much for being here tonight.